Okay, next we have a public safety report from the Fire Department. We have Chief Pete Daly who's going to present.
Good evening, Mayor Dibball, members of City Council. Richard took away some of my thunder because last time I did a presentation, this place was packed. And here it is again, another Fire Department presentation. Not that I'm going to brag about the Fire Department, but... And the heavy hitters are here tonight. We've got the previous Fire Chief, and I've got John Cassidy back here, so I thought... So when my performance evaluations do, I'll try and remember to remind the City Manager that there were a lot of attendance here, so... Okay, all can inside. We're here for twice a year, the Fire Department as well as the Police Department. We get in front of the council and the public to let you know how we're doing and what's going on. So that's what I'm here for tonight. I've brought some help with me, so you don't have to look and listen to me the whole time. I brought Jesse Frias, our Fire Safety Inspector, Jordan Poe, one of our firefighters, and Jason Sustorff, one of our firefighters. So they'll each be giving you a little piece. So we'll get through this as briefly but as informatively as we can. Why am I not moving? So, one of the things that we always start off with when we do these presentations is to make sure that we stick to kind of our motto. And our motto is, having an operational background, our motto is very simple, and that is making sure we get the right engine with the right people to the right location in the right time and make sure they do the right thing. That's what we're all about in the fire service. Tonight, we're going to cover three areas for you. We're going to talk about fire prevention. We've done a lot of neat things in fire prevention this year, in 2017, in this last year. We're going to talk about some of the EMS enhancements that we've added to the fire service, and we're also going to do a 2017 wrap-up on some of the things we accomplished. So with that, I'll let Jesse Frias step right up and start off.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. In 2014, September 2014, unfortunate event happened at one of our schools, and us in the Fire Prevention Bureau figured it's time to step up our game and create some innovative ways to get our safety message out. And we started with our public schools. We figured that that's one of the places we could start and globally expand, educating the staff and the students of our schools to take that home, to spread that out, you know, twofold. Enforcement through education. We like to think enforcement through education is the best result. Enforcement through punitive actions sometimes don't measure the same, so our focus is education. Our proactive community through effective and innovative public safety services. The Bureau's area of responsibility include fire code enforcement, fire inspections, building plan review, development services, public education, community outreach programs, fire investigation, origin, cause, and determination. History, in 2015, the Fire Prevention Bureau inspected 518 occupancies. This included 38 schools, both private and public K-12. Out of these schools, 15 were the Uba City Unified School District, a large quantity of, we don't really like to call them violations, but the fire code calls them violations, but we like to call them areas to increase public safety, or safety. It was determined that our education process needed to ramp up a little bit, and we decided that we were going to put together a training program for all of our schools through teamwork approach, our teachers, maintenance, and the custodial staff. It was really empowering them, the information on how to correct, how to identify, and how to react. Some of the recommendations: electrical safety training, fire extinguisher training, update and expand injury and illness prevention programs, adopt a SASH program for their school, update their policies, develop district-wide plans, provide copies of owner manuals and employees on proper use of safety precautions and equipment. In our schools, one of the things that everyone loves to do is bring stuff from home, but to educate them that residential items should stay at your home and not in the commercial environment. Most commonly found items during our inspection process were electrical in nature. Electricity is capable of causing fires, and it also causes life-threatening injuries. This is where we focus a lot of our attention to educate the awareness of electrical hazards, the identification of freight cords, and how to mitigate those situations at their school, empower them with the information. Some of the items that we have found was, this is an electrical room in one of the schools. This was kind of an abandoned area, however, through maintenance, it was undiscovered that water was leaking into this area and could be a potential hazard. Overloaded outlet. To the trained eye, this looks very obvious, but to untrained eye, it looks like maybe it could just be a dirty outlet. But this is a 20-amp circuit. It's definitely burnt, and it should be out of service or replaced. A heat detector unsecured to the ceiling. And again, this is an awareness situation, not that the schools weren't doing their job, it was just that identifying what the device is and how important it is for it to be secured and in service. Freight electrical wires. Again, when we do our inspections, we not only look, you know, behind desks, under desks, but we look for opportunities of damage. The Fire Prevention Bureau provided electrical safety awareness training to the Unified School District, fire extinguisher training, fire safety checklist, electrical safety guidelines, extension cord handouts, fire extinguisher inspection documents, emergency exit and egress lighting documents, and fire retardant documents. So what changed between 2016 and 2017? Did we have an impact? Well, through all of our collaborative effort, we were able to turn this around 64%, which is a huge number. Our perspective, the Uba City Unified School District has approximately 11,855 students plus administrative staff, teachers, maintenance, division, custodial staff. From a global perspective, we figured that if we can not only get to the students and get to their parents and their grandparents, that we can spread our word, our safety message. Again, with the ability to, not with the inability to inspect homes, our global area was to affect people by way of education. Looking at collaborative efforts from a global perspective, these same principles learned at schools could be applied at home, having a positive impact in saving lives and property. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Sustorff. I'm a firefighter here in the city on Rescue One. We're going to be implementing some new items into our EMS increment this year, and one of those items is called the King Airway. The King Airway is a device that isolates the esophagus from the airway, or, I'm sorry, yeah, the esophagus from the airway. It's an advanced airway. Right now, the devices we use, they only move the tongue out of the way from getting in the way of the lungs. So you can see up here, you have the patient's tongue in the way. The current airways we use right now, thank you very much, that's a much better... The current airways we use right now lift the tongue out of the way, but that is it. The King Airway isolates the airway from the stomach. This is important because when rescue breaths are being given during something like an overdose or a CPR, the air that's being pushed into the patient can go into their stomach and not their lungs where it needs to go. So the King Airway is very easy to use, and it can be very quickly applied to a patient. And I'm very excited about this coming into play because it's going to really affect our outcomes positively when it comes to field saves. It's inserted through the patient's mouth and is inflated, these two balloons are inflated, which isolates the airway. That's pretty much it for that. It's very easy to use and requires minimal training. This is going to be going into effect, I believe, in the next month. Are there any questions on this? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see. Hi, everyone. I'm Jordan. I'm on Engine Three, firefighter on Engine Three. Another thing that we're implementing into our medical bags is a drug called naloxone, or its generic name is called Narcan. You may have heard of it. It's now available over the counter. What it's mainly used for is overdoses on opiates. You may have heard on the news how big of a problem opiate overdoses are. They're becoming more and more prevalent. 64,000 people died from drug overdoses in 2016. 66% of those were, they were opiate overdoses. So Narcan is a drug that we can give that reverses the effects of those opiates. And opiates are drugs like heroin, methadone, but also fentanyl, Percocet, and Norcos, you know, drugs that we get prescribed for pain from our doctor. A lot of times, I think the word overdoses kind of has a negative stigma to it, but we have, you know, grandmothers who had a hip replacement that are on these same pain medications who may have accidentally taken too much. So it's not always someone who's, it's not always a junkie, you know, it's someone who could be just mistakenly took too much of their drugs. Let's see. So just a brief overview on how Narcan works. We have opioid receptors in our brains that the opioid molecules fit perfectly in there, and this Narcan kind of drives a wedge and displaces those molecules. And so what it does is it brings our respiratory rate back up and increases our consciousness, which opiate overdoses make us respiratory depressed and decreases our consciousness. So severe opiate overdoses, it results in slowing your respirations. Ultimately, you stop breathing, and you aspirate your MSS, or you aspirate your vomit, is basically how people end up passing away from opiate overdoses. It's pretty easy to use, just like the King Tubes. It comes in a little vial like that, and they're on the picture, and that white tip is what we call mucosal atomization device. And so it goes up the nose, and we're able to spray it directly in the nose, and the body absorbs it through the blood capillaries in your nose. By County Ambulance administered it 53 times in 2017, so it's pretty commonly used. And if we're able to use it before By County gets there, we have a better chance of a positive outcome for that patient. So one last thing we're doing is we're adding glucometers on our bags. Again, pretty prevalent, diabetes, 30.3 million people in America have diabetes. In that same study, CDC said that 80.1 million US adults are living with prediabetes. So that's over 100 million Americans who live with some sort of blood sugar disorder. So again, it's obviously pretty prevalent. What we carry in our bags right now is a tube of what we call oral glucose. It's basically a sugar and water, and we're able to give that to people with low blood sugars. Unfortunately, low blood sugar, those symptoms can mimic stroke symptoms, a myriad of other symptoms. So with these glucometers, we're actually able to assess properly and treat properly, as well as being able to cut down on that treatment time. So again, if we can get this done before By County gets there, By County Ambulance gets there, that's a quicker transport to the hospital. And like Jason said, that all these skills are going to be implemented within the next month. We have our training planned for all three of our shifts throughout April, and I think these are going to be helping the city and all the citizens quite a bit. I'm pretty excited about it. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have the last part. We'll talk about, wrap up of 2017. These guys behind me, I know they spent a couple minutes up here, but they've got hundreds of hours in these projects. They really do. We had to go through, it's not an easy task, just those two medications and using that device, we have to go through our local, what we call LMSA, which is Sierra Sac Valley EMS, to get authorization. There's protocols, there's procedures, there's training put in place, as well as purchasing everything, training. So these guys did all the research, and they did an outstanding job on the EMS side. On the prevention side, we spent a lot of months working with the school district to bring down the number of violations that they had, and really, just did an outstanding job. So I really appreciate everything that they've accomplished. So 2017, let me wrap it up for you real quick. Just to remind everybody, for the audience, in case you don't know, this Uba City Fire Department, we serve the city limits, as well as an area called CSAG, which covers about 30 square miles, a little over 30 square miles. I know it's a confusing slide, but I'll make it real easy for you. If you look at the green arrows, that's the increase in percentage of total calls we go on through the years. So since 2010, we've had a pretty steady increase of calls, around 4% to 5%, 1% in 2014, and as we, the last three years, we've been pushing 6% and 7% increase in call volume. Our call volume last year in 2017 was a little over 10,586. The red ones indicate if it was an increase or decrease. So our total calls went up, so that block is red, and the green block next to it shows that it was lower. Our structure fires went up by nine, 61 versus 50. Our other fires dropped. Our EMS always increases. That's probably our most prominent call. We usually average about 85% call volume on EMS side, and so on and so forth. So apparatus, then and now, I'm going to talk about apparatus real quick. So the question of the day, does anyone know where the pitcher was taken on the left?
Water tower on Plum tree.
Water tower on Plum tree. You're absolutely right, Councilman Buckland. So that's where we used to have our fire engines. I don't know how old that pitcher is, but I'll let you be the judge. But we've gone from apparatus like that to what we have on the right, which is one of our newest engines that we purchased last year. Now, Finance tried to get me to purchase another engine, but I told him I wasn't going to purchase that engine, especially when Darren Gale wanted to drive it. Anything with him driving an engine, I've got to do something different here, so. So I talked her out of buying that engine, even though it was a convertible, so. No, so for new apparatus, we have another engine that the council authorized this year. It's being constructed right now. It should, we're going back for final in May or June, I believe, is what we're waiting without we finished. We put in service on the bottom-left corner, a new battalion chief rig this year as well. So we've been placing apparatus appropriately, and I appreciate the support of the council because this stuff is very expensive to put in place. We also have a new rescue that's being constructed right now. We're going, that should be ready in sometime in April. So we have a new rescue in April, and a new engine coming in May or June. The rescue will replace the current rescue that we're using right now, and this one will also have air and light capability, which is important for us because a lot of times we'll run out of air at the scene, in the bottles that we wear on our packs, and we'll have to go back to station and refurbish them or fill those bottles up. We'll have this ability on scene. The other thing that we're still waiting on, thanks to the state, but they've offered us a $800,000 hazmat vehicle as recently as the last couple of days. We've asked, when do we get that vehicle? This one on the left, we get it for free from the state. The only thing that they ask is if there's an emergency and they need it, that we respond, and we send some people with it, and then they reimburse us. So it's a pretty good deal for the city, and it's about an $800,000 vehicle, and we've been promised now to be here before June of 2018. So hopefully, before this June, we'll have another vehicle they'll be adding to our fleet. Currently, right now, we have 30 people from the region, 17 from our hazmat team, five from our city out of the 17, going through hazmat training on the right. The state also paid for that training. That was about $200,000 training for six weeks, and the state picked that up and covered all the costs for the training, our overtime, our backfill, and all those things that were needed. So this is a huge deal. This is about a million-dollar worth of equipment and training that we're getting for free from the state. Also this year, we were successful in acquiring from the council money to replace our self-contained breathing apparatus, our packs that we were on our back, and they have about a 15-year lifespan, and we were able to acquire that as well, so that's been another success for Another grant that we received was for a trailer from Department of Fish and Game, Office of Spill Prevention and Recovery. It was about $35,000 for the trailer and all the equipment for it. It has a lot of boom equipment in it, in case they have any type of spill on any of the rivers, hydrocarbons, oils, things like that. Our team is trained on how to respond and deploy those booms and to try and contain those oil spills in our river, which is where we get our water from, or other surrounding We were also successful in receiving two grants during 2017. Each one had a value of about $32,000 to replace our extrication equipment. You're commonly known as the Jaws of Life. So we replaced those two, two of those as well. We have five sets on our first five-out engines, and this will be our fourth set, the third and fourth set here, and all four of those have been on grants. The last thing real quick is our SAFER grant. It's, our SAFER grant has allowed us to keep our staffing levels at a good level. It's a two-year grant that we got through FEMA, and it's allowed us to pick up nine additional firefighters. But the neat thing about it is, all nine of those, even though they came originally on just a two-year grant, through attrition and people retiring, we were able to pick up all eight of those people full-time. So now those people have transitioned out of the SAFER grant onto full-time employment. The last person actually got full-time employment down in Southern California, where his family is from, so he went back down there. But what's neat about it is, we hired these people, and the intent of the grant is to hopefully get them full-time employment, and within the first year, year and a half, we succeeded in picking up eight out of nine of those people, which is really neat. And then we have, we've since then, we've brought six more people on to fill that position. And we've also extended the grant to August. The grant was supposed to end in February, but we managed our money well. We had an extra $238,000. We asked FEMA if we could extend the grant, and they said yes. So now we've extended the six people we have now for another six months until August, and then we'll be, hopefully, I'll be coming back about applying for another SAFER grant. So, and if you don't recognize where that pitcher's taken from, I had to do that because my previous boss is in the house, and when we go back to pick up the fire engines during Wisconsin, we have to take them for a test drive, and it's 40 minutes from where they make the fire engines to Green Bay, Wisconsin, where they play football with the Packers, so. So I had to get a pitcher with Green Bay in the background. Last but not least, we hired, we've hired 20 to 21 people in the last couple of years, really filling a lot of voids from people retiring. We had a big influx of people retirement. So with that, we had a lot of training, and that's been our focus, is doing a lot of training in the department. So just to kind of give you an idea of how much training we do, in 2017, we did over 19,000 hours of training, and that's equivalent to 434 hours per firefighter in our department, and that's equivalent to 3.5 hours of training per day. On average, we'll train our firefighters about two hours a day each day they work, and they do other things as well. So we almost doubled the training hours just last year because we had so many new people and we had to get so much training in and get them to a certain level. So that's kind of the recap. I tried to be as brief as possible, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Great report. Thank you. Any questions for...
I just have one question. Why couldn't you have photoshopped in the Green Bay stadium behind? Because the former and retired chief has been longing for Green Bay to come back up and rise, you know, to a level of a championship team, so.
Appreciate it.
One day.
I'll take note of that, sir.
Chief, for the, I'm losing it here, the diabetes and the overdoses, is that an extra expense on your department, or did we get money to help take care of that for you? Did they give us any free money, or is that an extra expense on your department?
That's an extra expense on our department, and right now, I just absorbed it, and within our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope.
You know, not to interrupt, but to answer your question further, Jason has brought up a good point. We have an exchange program with By County as well. So we purchase them, but as we use them, they'll restock us, and so that's another way that we keep that stock up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great report. Thank you. We do have a request to speak from Mr. Bob Renton.
Yes.
On this item?
There's only one item in there. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Renton. I reside in Livoke, and I own a home on Hun Road in the proposed annexation area. And I saw the chief's agenda items, so I thought this would tie into his efforts tonight. Perhaps he could correct me if I say anything wrong. Now, back to the last meeting. I think there was some misunderstanding after my comments at the last council meeting, and I personally do not have any expectation of subsidized fire service to the county service area G. Somehow, someone got that information or understanding that I had some expectation. I reviewed my comments, and I'm totally baffled how someone could come to that conclusion. However, that's the nature of communication. I do not expect any handouts. I pay all my bills, and I own all my own property without any debt. I do not know anyone in this, in my neighborhoods of the annexation area who even understands the CSAG area and this subject. I did not know anything about it at all myself until about two years ago, when then Mayor Buckland mentioned the subsidized fire service of the proposed annexation area. So I began to look into the issue. Now, my last comments, my comments last meeting were meant only to bring some perspective to the Uba City Fire Department unrecovered costs for CSAG. The point is that most of the problem will remain even if our area is annexed. Again, our area is about 6%, that one square mile at the bottom, called the keyhole often, out of 17.6. So even if our area is annexed, the 6%, still, you're going to be left with 16 square miles of a problem, and the unrecovered cost will remain for many years. Now, this is a problem inherited by the current council and the city management from the Walton merger of 2001. That agreement should be renegotiated. I actually would endorse Mr. Buckland's sentiment on that issue. He suggested turning the CSAG fire service back over to the county if the proposed annexation does not, if the proposed annexation area does not want to be annexed. He said it is unfair to Uba City taxpayers to be subsidized in a county area even if it's just $1, and I would agree. By the way, I checked Chief Daly's report to council in late 2015. At that time, the subsidy level was about $126,000 for all of CSAG. Now, projecting that level of subsidy from now all the way back to 2001 agreement, that would come out to about $2 million. That's a decent amount of change. So what is the bottom line here? In my view, Uba City management should take the initiative to renegotiate the Walton agreement, even if that means undoing the Walton merger and rolling it back to county responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any comments?
Through the mayor. Seeing as my name was kind of thrown out there, and in the very beginning, the bus seemed to back back over me. I don't disagree with what Mr. Renton has said that I may have said in my comments. I'm very, very clear about this. Where we have a disconnect is, Mr. Renton is simply trying to equate 6% the square mile area of the keyhole area to the 17, more than 17 square miles. If you equate it on population, that number is significantly higher, Mr. Renton. There are far more residences and service requirements in that area than the remaining part of the 17 square miles. Most of those square miles are fairly rural in that 17 square miles. So while you get to play with numbers, I'd like you to kind of bring these back as analytical as we can be up here. We are here for the citizens of Uba City, those that live, reside, and work in Uba City, and this is where they do their business, and this is where they pay their property taxes, this is where they get their fire service from. In no way do I believe that any other area should underfund through assessment, not even a dollar for services. So I'm glad that you kind of stick with me on that part of it, but let's really look at this in the future. Should the annexation fail? Again, I'm a proponent of the annexation, just not the process, but we certainly need to look for the welfare of the citizens of Uba City, not to have to go out and supplement any type of fire services or services that you benefit from on being a homeowner on Hun Road, but yet don't want to be part of a municipality like Uba City. That's fine. Stay out. Vote to stay out. You just don't get the best of the service that you're going to have in the area and the closest service for your the closest service for your fire protection, and you can pay all kinds of fire insurance because that's what you choose to do. That's what you got to be telling. When you go knocking on the doors around your neighborhood, that's what you got to be telling people. Hey, if we have to come out of Uba City Fire Service, it's not a renegotiation. It's either they pay an assessment or get out. One of the two. That's the way I see it. It's pretty clear. Let them get their service from another location. We owe nothing. That inherited process of Walton, we owe nothing through that process, other than to be able to recover our exact costs for the service, for fire service to that area. We owe nothing more than that. We will provide fire service if that continues. That would be my vote, but don't, please, don't misrepresent what that area really looks like. Population-wise, it's far greater than 6%, Mr. Renton.
Thank you. All right.